Order, let's enter the pledge.
Roll call please.
Phillips.
Gish.
President.
Johansson.
Here.
Burger.
Here.
Porcorde.
Here. Yeah, I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda for tonight.
I'll move.
Second. And roll call.
Porcorde.
Hi.
Johansson.
Hi.
Burger.
Hi.
Gish.
Hi.
De Phillips.
Hi.
Entertain motion to approve our consent agenda.
I'll move.
And roll call.
Porcorde.
Hi.
De Phillips.
Hi.
Gish.
Hi.
Johansson.
Hi.
Burger.
Hi.
That's going to move us into our public forum tonight. Do we have anyone who's signed up to address council of public forum?
Yes, we do. Nancy Baker-Curtis.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening, and I apologize for reading off my phone. This was kind of a last minute addition to our schedule, and I appreciate your flexibility. We're coming right from therapy. I just wanted to take a minute and read into the record and thank you all for taking your very proactive stance in planning the City of Grimes for all residents. I'd in particular like to highlight the city's commitment to providing equitable access to residents with disabilities. I'm a parent of two children. My daughter is nine and a half years old and Charlie here is six and a half years old. Charlie has physical and intellectual disabilities that impact every facet of his life. Charlie is also incontinent, which means he continues to use diapers. So oftentimes when we go places, we have to leave very unexpectedly and we can really only leave our home for very short increments of time, about two hour bursts. And that's because there's no place that is private, safe, and dignified to change Charlie. In 2019, I approached the City of Grimes Parks and Recreation Board and I asked them to consider adding a height adjustable adult size changing table to this community complex. And the board unanimously agreed, and in doing so, they provided not just Charlie, but lots of people with disabilities with equitable access to private, safe, dignified restroom facilities. What you may not know is that as a result of that restroom addition, Charlie was able to continue practicing walking here in the hallways at the community complex. And as of today, Charlie is very near independent ambulation. And that is just possible because he had a place to come and he had a place where he could stay. We didn't have to go back home in order to change him. Some of you may have seen me around town and pretty active in the community. We like to get out and we try to be involved as much as we can. One of our favorite places to go is the Grimes Public Library. It's a super welcoming, friendly place. It's uber exclusive and inclusive. And we often go there, but just like many places, its restroom facilities are just simply inadequate. We can't get the wheelchair, myself and Charlie into that facility. And so I actually met with the library director, Mrs. Hyde, and I shared my concerns about the library back in 2019 when the library was in its initial planning stages. And Director Hyde has been very receptive and I'm extremely grateful and I feel the need to speak to you all about that here today. Director Hyde is completely committed to providing equitable access to all Grimes residents. And she's assured me that our new public library will have a family restroom that includes a height adjustable adult size changing table. So I felt compelled to come here and just express my gratitude to all of you because these changes are not something that can be done inexpensively. They require a robust financial commitment. And it's well beyond what the ADA requires when it comes to access. And so I want to recognize that financial commitment because the decisions that the City of Grimes has made has influenced other organizations and entities to make similar decisions. In December of last year, the Iowa Department of Transportation opened their first inclusive restroom facility at their Victor Rest Area. And the decisions made here helped influence that change. I recently had the honor of presenting at the Public Health Conference of Iowa and having the opportunity to share some of these inclusive accommodations. In doing so, it's not just making our lives easier, but it's making the lives of many Iowans with disabilities easier. And you're inspiring other communities to do the same. We love Grimes. We want to participate in all the exact same stuff as all your kids want to do. We're at the time where there's a lot of growth happening and we're about to make big changes. Big projects are underway. The splash pad is coming, Grimes Flex. And so as you continue to make these changes, I would just urge you to consider planning for all of your residents, big and small. I would ask that you include family and assisted restroom accommodations that include height adjustable adult size changing tables. In doing so, you'll ensure that all Grimes residents and residents from around the state have equitable access to safe, private, and dignified restroom facilities in community spaces, right? That's what it's about, community-based living. I'm sorry, buddy. So I want to thank you for your time this evening and just ask that you please consider planning for all of your residents.
Thank you for taking the time to address us and helping us recognize and personalize a lot of the decisions that we make that sometimes we don't think about how they actually impact people. And we appreciate your involvement in the community and I thank you for bringing Charlie and speaking to us about it. We appreciate it.
Like to add, just normally don't do this in public forum, but Nancy's a valuable asset to the community. I know she does a lot of work in our community and for the state, but this is just a great example, I think, of where sometimes our life experiences make us blind to some topics and some things because we just have not experienced them. And when people like Nancy step up and advocate, that can open our eyes to those things. And so I really encourage other residents to be like Nancy and do that for your cause and whatever is affecting your life. If we as a city can make that better for you.
Yeah, thank you. With that, do we have anybody else who signed up to speak at public forum tonight?
No, sir.
All right, we're going to move into our public and council agenda items. First is, first on the agenda is Waterworks Park improvements. We're going to have a public hearing on this item. But first, Jake or Alex, Alex, do you want to give us some background on this before the hearing?
Yeah, sure. So the number of action items tonight before you, the first is holding a public hearing. And then there's a number of resolutions following a traditional format for a public bid letting. As you know, we've been working on the splash pad and the redevelopment of Waterworks Park for a better part of a year now. We have kind of completed the design and sent it out to bid a week ago. We did receive two bids for the project. The bids were over the engineer's estimate, which was approximately 3.2 million. That was base plus alternates. Knowing that we were in a certain bid environment, we identified a number of alternates that were available to us. I've listed them here on the screen. Their parking lot lighting, the playground equipment, the natural play equipment, just to kind of give us an ability to have some flexibility as we move forward with the project. Again, identified the engineer's estimate was a little over 3.2 million. Bid range was 3.7 to 4.1. The low bid in this case was just over 3.7 million and was edge commercial, which is a local Grimes contractor. So knowing that that is in excess of where we originally thought we would be with the improvements there at Waterworks Park, we did prepare a funding option for the council to consider that uses a combination of the existing park improvement funds that have been allocating and accumulating, I guess, over the past couple of years. There is money obviously within the splash pad CIP. There are some water main and sanitary sewer and storm sewer improvements that are benefiting the greater park. So we've evaluated the enterprise funds to be able to kick in some additional funds to help kind of bridge that, utilizing some lost cash on hand. And then there's obviously a fundraising component. So all of those funding options total up to where we can fund the project. Normally, this would be the point in time where I turn it over and say, we recommend approval and hold the public hearing and have all the resolutions. Our recommendation is still to hold the public hearing and take the public's feedback. Following that, our recommendation is to delay action on the three resolutions. The reason being is that while we have a park board meeting tomorrow that we anticipate taking the same information to and allowing the park board to kind of weigh in on the utilization in this particular case of utilizing the kind of park improvement funds that are currently on hand. So the plan would be hold that meeting tomorrow with park board, get their recommendation, bring that back to you folks. We're still supportive of the project. We're very excited about it. You know, I think the interesting thing, the, this has been, I think, a project that is accumulation of a lot or culmination of a lot of public feedback and feedback from the Parks and Recreation Board, from the council, for those that attended the neighborhood meeting and even people like Nancy tonight that spoke about having inclusive restrooms. That was a component of this that we were making sure that the restroom facility here with the shelter has those inclusive accommodations within there. So we're excited to kind of continue to bring that to these facilities so that people of all kind of walks of life can, can attend and utilize this. So that's the recommendation tonight. Hold the hearing, take the feedback, delay action on the resolutions. We'll be back to you at the first meeting in June with the parking records recommendation, and from there we'll be able to move forward.
Got it. I appreciate that. I'm glad, I'm glad to see the way this works out. We'll be able to wait and get the feedback from the park board. With that, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to council on this topic in the hearing tonight? All right, hearing no one. Have we received any written communication on this item?
No, sir.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and of these resolutions, in particular, are we going to delay action on these three resolutions too, right?
Correct.
All right, correct. So we're going to move to, we're tied to be unless council, unless there's anything you want to talk about tonight and that tonight's meeting, but I'm assuming we'll wait for some feedback from the park board and then have a discussion.
One question, only if you think this is necessary, but would it be helpful to have a special meeting to get the process rolling faster? Is that just not necessary? It's not going to delay anything that much?
I appreciate that, Councilmember Gish. I don't think in this particular case that delaying action on the award of the contract by two weeks or two and a half weeks in this particular case is a detriment to the project. You know, if we were anticipating delaying for potentially a month or more, then I would say yes. But on this particular case, I'm not too worried about that. We have 60 days from the date of the bid that the contractors required to kind of commit to the project in that bid amount. So we're well within that.
Thank you. All right.
Do you need a motion to delay action on this three or not?
I just didn't know.
No, no, you don't. You don't have to have a motion. Nobody's moved it since then.
All right. But now we're going to move to item B tonight, which is the third reading of ordinance 761 regarding the utility rates.
So as we've stated before, just to reiterate a little bit on it, overall with the sewer, the proposed increase will go into effect in August. Next year and subsequent years, it will go in in July. The increase for the sewer is 7.5%, and it will be that way for all five years. It's a reduction from the prior year rate recommendation of a 15% increase. This increase will be 57 cents on the base and usage rates, taking them from 7.65 to 8.22 per month. For water, the proposed rate increase is 2.5% for each year. It's a reduction from the prior year recommendation of 12% primarily due to increased consumption. This increase will be 26 cents per about each thousand gallons of usage. And we still do need the rate increase because we do have additional CIP projects scheduled in fiscal year '24 and the debt service is going to increase. Stormwater, we are not proposing any increases at this time. The city has strong reserves. Solid waste, our input costs have increased to 15.05 per residence for the combined solid waste and recycling charges due to metrowide recent rehauling, recent hauling RFP. We're proposing an increase on recycling to meet the costs, taking it to 4.32. And we're proposing an increase on solid waste to 9.59 for the first container and the actual cost of 10.73 for the second container per residence. The combined bill for residents with single cans will be 13.91 and the city will still subsidize the utility at the current level. So the monthly increase for a combined bill on an average residence using 4,000 gallons would be 6.53 per month with this recommendation.
All right, thank you, Marshall. And council, in the discussion, do we have action on this item?
I'll move the third reading of ordinance 761.
Roll call.
Gish.
Hi.
De Phillips. Johansson.
Hi.
Burger. Porcorde.
All right. I'll move final passage of ordinance, ordinance 761.
And discussion. Hearing number, roll call.
Gish.
Hi.
De Phillips. Porcorde.
Hi.
Burger. Johansson.
Hi.
All right, that passes and that brings us to the item C tonight, which is the third reading of ordinance 762. This is the M-Ket rezone. Alex?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No changes since the first and second consideration of the ordinance. Again, this is the balance of the M-Keds, light industrial area being rezoned from A1 to M1A located in zone one of the Highway 141 corridor. Proposed conceptual layout demonstrating subdivision of the property into three future lots. And so brief narrative of development standards. We have developed a zoning change agreement that's included in the packet for your consideration tonight with the rezoning, and we recommend approval.
All right, council, do we have discussion or action on this item?
I'll move the third reading of ordinance 762.
Second.
And discussion. Hearing number, roll call.
Johansson.
Hi.
Porcorde.
Hi.
Burger. Gish.
Hi.
De Phillips.
Hi.
Move ordinance 762 for final passage.
Second. Discussion. Hearing number, roll call.
Johansson.
Hi.
Porcorde.
Right.
Burger. De Phillips. Gish.
Hi.
That passes and that brings us to item D tonight, which is the proposed rezoning. This is a property generally located east of Highway 141 and south of northeast Beaverbrook Boulevard. This is from A1 ag district or four planned residential development. We're going to have a public hearing on this. But before we have the public hearing, Alex, you want to give us a little bit of background?
Yes, sir. So this is a 30 acre piece of property located just east of 141 and would be south of a future Beaverbrook extension shown here on the screen. It currently carries a A1 agriculture rezoning and is located within the Highway 141 mixed use development corridor district. The proposed rezoning will include two different zoning classifications, R3 medium density for townhomes and R4 planned unit development, which will include some multifamily as well as commercial development opportunities. This is just a brief overview of kind of the existing conditions. This is a copy of the future land use plan, so it shows kind of working your way from the top right and kind of clockwise. You have North Point Park. You have some existing single family neighborhoods. This is like the North Point Silkwood Neighborhoods. You have existing medium density neighborhoods with Camus Park and North Point Townhomes, the existing Mid-Am Station along 141. And then the balance of the site is undeveloped and identified as future medium density and future mixed use. So we always use future land use plan as the guiding tool for how to develop or how properties should develop and be rezoned. This particular case, again, we spoke about there being kind of a combination of some mixed use, M1 in this case, and then medium density. The proposed concept plan for the rezoning is shown on the right-hand side of the screen, which demonstrates that it's principally in conformance with the future land use plan. So you see some transitioning uses of townhomes adjacent to that single family. Working your way kind of west into some multifamily where you have a break with future Northeast Destination Drive and then a commercial development occurring in between there and 141. We always require the developer with the rezoning to provide some sort of conceptual elevation. So this demonstrates the general characteristic of what they're looking for in this particular case. The multifamily has, you know, a lot of the design characteristics that are required within the 141 overlay district, townhomes. We've tried to limit the mass of them as much as possible by, you know, keeping the unit counts down within the buildings. The development for the residential portion will include a clubhouse with a pool kind of some recreation components, dog park, that type of thing. And then, as I said, there's obviously some commercial opportunities along the frontage of 141 where they anticipate there being some retail, office and other uses. Generally consistently, you've seen on the other side of 141, the heritage development. So that kind of gives you a good summary of what we're looking at here. P and Z did review this and provide a recommendation of approval. Spoke kind of a lot about the transition of those land uses, the appropriateness of them, making sure there's adequate trail connections into the development so that they can get up to North Point Park, et cetera. So with that, we recommend approval, but happy to take any questions following the public hearing.
All right, thanks for that, Alex. And with that, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to address council of the public hearing tonight? Hearing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing on this item. Have we received any written communication?
No, sir.
All right, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this up for council discussion or action.
Just one quick question, Alex.
Yes, sir.
So we've got the, generally to the east, we've got single family residence.
Correct.
When we try to, you know, scale up developments like this, we tend to have a buffer. We've got a small buffer strip of medium density residential there. Then it goes into the R4, which is a higher density residential that appears next to the median density just by unit.
So, yeah, so you actually, in this case, so there's, so you're right, correct. You have the single family. From there, you have 35 feet of landscape buffer. So that's your first line of defense with that landscaping. From there, you have really three rows of townhomes. The first row, which is kind of shown in that orange, that's the medium density portion. The density doesn't exceed eight units an acre. We've greatly increased the distance between the buildings to kind of again deal with that massing. Try to make the scale a little more corporate to single family. As you transition across that street, you're still in medium density townhomes. They're just in the PUD portion of the, of the, the development. So you can see the units are slightly closer together. There may be an extra unit per row of building, but still townhomes before you get to kind of the middle of the project where you have the four multifamily, excuse me, four multifamily buildings. In this case, they've also proposed a pretty sizable wet detention facility kind of located on the northwest corner to kind of help provide some additional screening off the proposed Beaverbrook extension into the development. Just think it'll be a nice amenity kind of sitting there on the corner. So, great, thank you.
I know it's zoning at this point, and I guess I don't necessarily have any issue with the zoning. My only comment is I kind of wonder how residents feel about maybe expecting more commercial within that chunk. It seems like on the balance, there's more residential than commercial and I kind of wonder how residents will react to that concept. I don't know. It's just a comment. I'm not saying it's good or bad. It just makes me wonder. I'm going to have to talk to people about it before we come back for preliminary plot or something, but that's something I think should maybe be considered as perceived.
There's no other comments. I'll move the first reading of ordinance 763.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing number, roll call.
Johansson.
Hi.
Porcorde.
Right.
De Phillips. Gish.
Hi.
Burger.
Hi.
All right, that passes and that brings us to item E tonight, which is resolution 05-3922. This is authorizing development agreement negotiation on northeast Beaverbrook and northeast Destination Extension. Alex?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I paired this up because it is to some degree related or at least adjacent to the rezoning that you all just considered for the first time. So in this particular case, the developer Signature Real Estate has requested incentives or assistance in form of TIF to help with the cost associated with the extension of Destination and northeast Beaverbrook Boulevard. If you recall at a prior council meeting, because of the anticipation of this project coming forward and knowing that an access permit will be necessary for Beaverbrook, we engaged with Snyder and Associates to help determine what the extent of those improvements Beaverbrook and Destination need to be. Knowing some of the things that we've learned from Highway 141 and the future of that corridor and just kind of understanding the traffic volumes in this area from some of that corridor evaluation. The improvements there along Beaverbrook in particular off of 141 are going to be quite significant in terms of the turn lane improvements that are necessary, five lane section in this particular case. We also have to deal with the proximity of where Destination and Beaverbrook will intersect. In this case, it's too close for a signal, so we have to deal with that kind of traffic homing in some way, which is aroundabout in this particular case. So the costs associated with these improvements just exceed beyond what the subdivision improvements would normally require. Anytime that we're dealing with a request for an infrastructure incentive, we, you know, we have to in our minds weigh what the benefit is and also, you know, what has also happened in the general area. So in this case, you know, we're with the extension of Beaverbrook and Destination, you know, we're going to have a better connected transportation network. Certainly going to provide a relief to 141, 44 and Gateway in this case by having more ways in and out, particularly for the heritage development and the Silkwood development that kind of bound this to the east and to the west. In this particular case, the developer Signature has also been working with Mid-American and we believe there's a path forward to getting Destination connected all the way down to where it terminates today at Menards, which we see as a very big win and improvement to this particular area. So, so given all of that, we feel it's appropriate to move forward. Again, as we evaluated other development incentives in this area, there were incentives provided for the extension of Gateway on the Hope and Heritage side as well as a portion of Destination within the Destination Market area. So we feel there's some appropriateness with this, but before entered into any of those negotiations, we always ask council to authorize those. And then at such a time that those have concluded, we'll bring back the appropriate proceedings related urban or will necessary to facilitate it. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, feedback that you have on the matter before you, but we would recommend approval of the resolution.
Thanks for that background, Alex and council. Questions for Alex? Discussion on this item?
Alex, you basically said this, but I just want to put a finer point on it because this is something I get kind of passionate about, I guess you could say. something I get kind of passionate about, I guess you could say. Like you said, you know, with some of the adjacent properties and whatnot, if we didn't work out a deal like this, then the city would have to fund those, which put put a stressor on the city to be able to do some of these other projects we're doing. And so it might not feel like it to some people because I think some people would label these things as handouts and whatnot. I don't. I think in this case, we're clearly getting something for that. And it frees up the ability to do more things as a city for our citizens. So I just really want to point that out because I know some people get kind of sensitive about these things. But this, this is a good thing for residents, as you pointed out.
Well, good comments. And to your point, I mean, we're incentivizing, which we've kind of made a consistent history of something in return. That we know tangibly that we're getting either through the policies that we set in our tip agreements and incentivizing certain types of things come into the city. Or in this case, infrastructure that we'd otherwise have to pay for. So I appreciate your comments in that regard, council member Gish.
Alex, just so I'm clear, any development agreement that you're talking about would actually connect Destination. So it would include those conversations with many, correct? To encompass the full length of the roads. Yes. Thank you. No other comments. I'll move resolution zero five dash three nine two two.
Discussion. Hearing no roll call.
Johansson.
Hi.
Porker Dean.
Right.
De Phillips.
Hi.
Burger.
Sorry.
Gish.
All right.
All right, that passes and that will bring us to item F tonight, which is proposed rezoning. This is for the property generally located northwest corner of Southeast Thirty-Seven Street and South James Street. This is from A one Ag District to M one A Commercial and Limited Light Industrial District. This is the property. Well, Alex, can you tell us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we are just kitty corner of the R and R Prairie Business Park or directly east of kind of what we call Grimes Industrial Park. The property was acquired by Mark Anderson. As you all know, has developed the Legacy Park Development. It's been kind of a really great partner in bringing that project forward. Has demonstrated an interest over the past couple of years of kind of continuing that success here in Grimes and has, like I said, acquired this particular property. So I currently carry is an A one zoning. So they're requesting zoning to M one A and we are located in the Transportation Corridor District. So again, trying to compare what the proposed rezoning concept plan is with future land use plan. In this case, future land use plan identifies business park as the proposed land use, which would allow for that M one A kind of flex industrial development to occur. You can see the land use or the concept here demonstrates the construction of, you know, seven or eight buildings upon the eighty acres. The property is a little challenging in that there are some pretty significant drainage corridors running through it. There's also the two hundred and fifty foot wide easement for the high-power transmission corridor through the kind of the center of the site. So those kind of present some challenges on trying to kind of find a way to integrate the site. We've also been able to utilize a lot of the good information that we've received from the corridor studies and the sanitary sewer study and water study to help inform where utilities need to go, what sort of right of way is necessary, where access points need to go. All sorts of of things. So that's, it's really been helpful and kind of making informed decisions on our end as we review this particular project. So again, just demonstrating the layout here. Again, we always try to get some conceptual layouts. In this particular case, we actually have the first site plan under review for this project. So this is a proposed building that would be located on the site. And again, you can see a lot of the similar characteristics from the Legacy Park Development that Mr. Anderson has developed over the years here in Grimes. So with that, P and Z provided a recommendation of approval. Not recall there being any significant commentary on it, but they agreed with the proposed rezoning and were forwarding a recommendation of approval. So as would staff and haven't taken any questions.
All right, that background's helpful and we, we're going to have a public hearing on this item. So with that, I'm going to open the public hearing and is anyone wish to address council of the public hearing tonight? Hearing no one, have we received any written communication on this item?
No, sir.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. And council, do we have any discussion or action on this item?
Alex, just north of Thirty-Seven, I know we have James's multiple lanes, but I don't believe that runs the entirety of this property. And so I assume the easements and stuff for the future expansion that are taken into consideration.
That is correct. Yes. So we were able to use the James Street Corridor Study to inform the necessary right-of-way acquisition for this and also to determine what the appropriate locations for access points were so that we are kind of locating access in a way that is coordinated, where potentially signalized in the future. Thus to help make James function better in the future when it is widened.
Fantastic. I'll move first reading of ordinance seven sixty-four rezoning property.
Second, discussion. Hearing no roll call.
Gish.
Hi.
Johansson.
Hi.
De Phillips. Burger.
Right.
Porker Dean.
All right.
All right, that item passes and that'll bring us to G tonight, which is the City of Grimes Budget Amendments for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Marcia.
So the current amendment provides for additional expenditures and transfers totaling a million two hundred fourteen thousand six hundred seventy-three dollars that were not known at the time the council approved the budget back in March of twenty-one. Expenses will be covered with additional enterprise revenue, donations, hotel motel tax, G M T revenue and a small amount of reserves. Items addressed in the amendment include a project in the skate park that we were able to complete with a generous donation that was received. Warning sirens that were approved in the prior fiscal year but were not invoiced until this fiscal year. Additional wages and expense for the mid-year addition of the Communications Manager. Plan to purchase a lot for future project development. An increase in property casualty insurance realized in this fiscal year from ICAP and some additional enterprise expense for the payment of deposit refunds, sales tax, locating fees and two delayed invoices for solid waste from a prior year. Staff recommends approval.
All right, with that, I'm going to open a public hearing on this item and does anyone wish to address council of the public hearing tonight? Hearing no one? Have we received any written communication on this item?
No, sir.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and council, do we have action on this item?
I will move resolution zero five dash two one two two.
Discussion. Hearing no roll call.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Gish.
Hi.
Burger.
Hi.
Porker Dean.
Right.
Johansson.
Hi.
De Phillips.
Hi.
All right, that item passes and it'll bring us to H tonight, which is a Rocket Car Wash Site Plan. Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Located two hundred northeast Destination Drive, which is just north of Starbucks and the vacant outlaw joined the Menards Parking Lot. Currently has a zoning of C two and is within the zone two of Highway one forty-one corridor. The proposal is to construct a new tunnel car wash, approximately fifty-four hundred square feet. The single point of access off the private drive within Menards. We have also begun to require sound studies with all of our car washes due to some complaints that we have heard from the joint property owners about the noise emitted from the dryers in particular. So it's been a new thing reviewing those. A little challenging, but we're making our way through it. But the intent is to help mitigate any kind of negative components of it or nuisance components. And generally speaking, everyone's been really great to work with and compliant with that. So it hasn't been an issue. It's just complicated. So can see here, they've kind of tucked the building up against Destination Drive with keeping the parking in circulation to the west, showing the appropriate landscaping features on the site. This is a proposed conceptual or proposed elevations for the car wash. It's principally brick. There is some vertical medical, vertical metal panel accents as well as their kind of branding includes a tower element that has kind of skinned in polycarbonate. So it is see-through. As you can see, there are some colors associated with the building. We verify that they're static and do not change. So what you see here is what you should get. We're happy with that. With that, we recommend approval. I guess P and Z provided a recommendation of approval after discussions about how many more car washes are we going to get in town, of which I do not know the answer to. But we like clean cars, so happy to take any questions.
We have not incentivized car washes, correct?
Not directly.
All right, council, do we have any discussion or action on this item?
Hey, this is Brandon, San Antonio.
There is one under construction in Altoona, so we will be the home for number two.
You know, I, I just want to point out nothing against this company or anything, but just generally speaking, I've talked to city staff about car washes because we do hear from our residents like, oh, another car wash, another coffee shop. You know, but we are a major driving corridor and you have that many cars coming through, there's a market for this. And so, you know, as city staff and some developers have pointed out, you know, they're just meeting the demand for what we have in terms of that highway coming through. And that's a fair point, you know. Residents, I think, do need to remember that. Might not be their first pick, but there is a market for it and a need for it. So.
And there's a lot of weak areas to stop.
In reality, in that too.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's the zoning needs and whatnot, and so, right.
Council, any additional questions or?
I would just ask staff to look into, we are Tree City, USA City. I think some sort of clean car, car wash city designation that maybe also fit.
If there are many developers in the audience, by the way. See what you can do.
In the event that we could get another plaque placed along our roadways, I think that would be helpful.
Jeff, delete that from the minutes.
Cleanest cars in the state.
With that pithy comment, I will move the Rocket Car Wash Site Plan.
Second, discussion. Hearing no roll call.
Johansson.
Hi.
Gish.
Hi.
De Phillips. Burger.
Hi.
Porker Dean.
I am kind of.
All right, that passes and that'll bring us to item I tonight, which is resolution zero five dash four zero two two. This is authorized and approving a loan agreement providing for the sale and issuance of general obligation court purpose bond series twenty twenty-two A.
So the city did hold a bond sale today and we received six bids. One was asked to be removed. So we did have five bids in the end. They ranged in interest rate range from three point five four one nine seven four to three point six eight nine five four five. The low bidder was the Baker Group with the three point five four one nine seven four. These bids will further our fiscal year twenty-three C I P. And as a reminder, the C I P does include monies for annual park and trail planning improvements and development. Annual roadway rehab, James Street improvements, Jacob Street H M A overlay project, two signal projects, the Trail Ridge and Little Beaver Water Main Project, a new snowplow truck and building security and access control project that is going to take place. Staff would recommend approval.
All right, thank you for that. Marcia and council, do we have action on this item?
The only thing I would point out is, I believe a year ago when we let bids, we were in the low tubes, high ones, maybe? One point five five. And now we're talking about three, three and a half, three point six. So as you watch your national news at home and they talk about a rising interest rate environment, it's hitting us as well. It's more than double.
Still not six, though.
Not quite. They're trying.
I'll move resolution zero five dash four zero two two.
Second, discussion. Hearing no roll call.
Porker Dean.
Hi.
Gish.
Hi.
Johansson.
Hi.
Burger. De Phillips.
All right, that passes. Narrowly avoided having an interesting discussion. Resolution zero five dash three seven two two. This is the leading property from the Grimes Urban Renewal Area.
So I'm going to speak about the next three items at the same time, just to help kind of speed things along.
The next three.
The next three, because they are all related to the urban neural proceedings tonight. So if you recall, back in March, we presented a authorization to a negotiated development agreement with Rock Creek Investments for the construction of a medical campus. So similar to what we did tonight with Destination Drive, we've done the negotiation. Now we've brought you back the necessary proceedings in order to facilitate that development agreement. So urban renewal is tricky because every situation is unique. In this particular case, the age of the particular urban renewal area or plan and TIF ordinance require us to delete it from the urban renewal area and then reincorporate it at a later date. What that does is effectively allows that twenty-year shot clock to start over. So urban renewal has its limits with respect to how long you can enter into development agreements, particularly related to tax increment financing. So in this case, the current TIF ordinance expires next year, so that would not allow you to enter into much of a development agreement in order to facilitate the project. So, so the first action is to delete the property from the urban renewal plan. The second action item, so the following resolution is to delete it from the TIF ordinance. I think the TIF ordinance is the authority to collect the revenue off of it. And then the third item is to set a date for public hearing, which will reincorporate the, the area. There will be an ordinance and then there will be the setting of a date for, for consideration of a development agreement itself. So I gave you within the memo a taste for what that development agreement looks like. We do have the representatives from Rock Creek here tonight. I just wanted to take kind of a moment to kind of really speak about the relationship that we've built with them over the past couple of months. They are a fantastic team to work with and are truly committed to kind of taking this project even beyond what they had even envisioned. You might have seen that we did a press release about this kind of really exciting project for us. And I think it, in their case, I don't want to speak for them, really kind of blew them out, kind of blew their expectations out of the water in terms of all of the interests that ensued from that. So, you know, we're, we're looking at what we thought a couple of months ago, a project of the, you know, seventy to eighty thousand square feet range now approaching potentially hundred and ninety thousand square feet of, you know, really high-quality specialty medical campus development. And I think there's probably even some more room for growth in that, just kind of depending on what happens. So you know, with our commercial office incentives, which are again, are trying to drive daytime employment, trying to drive trips into the city. You know, there's, it's a pretty aggressive schedule that we provide, but this is what you get from that. Um, aggressive schedule is, you know, folks like Rock Creek are looking at Grimes for a development of like of this scale nature, which is really exciting for us. So we've already begun some of the initial pre-application meetings for their first phase of the site plan. They anticipate building this over the next five years or so, five phases. With the, the schedule, we know we have to identify what not to exceed amount for that, that TIF rebate is. In this case, we, we estimate. we estimate based on just the the amount of square footage and the relatively higher cost per square foot that that rebate may approach nineteen some million dollars. But again, that's a not to exceed amount. That's a performance base. So they they've got to put square footage on the ground in order to to kind of make that work. So and again, it's over a multitude of phases. So we're real excited about the project. Ask them to be here tonight. Again, if there's any questions that you guys have of them, but that gives you just a little bit of perspective on where we're going with this. But action tonight is not on the development agreement. It's on all of the kind of initial proceedings, but I wanted you to kind of know where that was going before we kind of got too far into it. Happy to turn it over to them if they've got any feedback for you, but we'd recommend approval of the following three resolutions.
Appreciate the the background, Alex, and obviously we'll have an opportunity to to engage with this further to and specifically about, you know, some of the plans that you're talking about, but I I appreciate your investment and your interest in Grimes. A couple of years ago or a few years ago when we made this incentive to try to get Class A office, it was very much a conversation whether Grimes could get Class A office at all. And so to see the enthusiasm to have a good partner and the interest level that, you know, you guys have shown and then taken it, you know, past your initial week. We are, we're excited about it. With that, if there is anything you want to share, you're more than welcome to. And council members, if you have anything you want to add or any questions tonight on the items before us, please do so.
Since the developers here, I do want to say to them personally, since actually hear me, I'm very excited, like the mayor just said, but I also really appreciate the partnership in terms of the park lane. But that also providing the community as well. So hats off to your group and bringing a good product, but also on that parking component too. So thank you.
Council, any additional discussion or?
I'll move resolution zero five dash four seven two two.
Discussion. Hearing our roll call.
Johansson.
Hi.
Porker Dean.
Hi.
Burger. Gish.
Hi.
De Phillips.
All right, that passes and that brings us to ordinance seven sixty six.
I'll move ordinance seven sixty six.
Oh, second.
Discussion. Hearing our roll call.
Johansson.
Hi.
Porker Dean.
Hi.
Burger. Phillips. Gish.
Hi.
That passes. That brings us to item L, which is resolution zero five dash four one two two.
I will happily move resolution zero five dash four one two two. Happily second.
Discussion. Hearing our roll call.
Johansson.
Hi.
Porker Dean.
Hi.
De Phillips.
Hi.
Gish.
Hi.
Burger.
Hi.
All right, that item passes and that brings us to M tonight. This is amending the Grimes Code Ordinance Title Nine with regard to regulation of wastewater sewer usage by deleting current sections nine through one in its entirety.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm happy to discuss wastewater. This has been a been a long time coming. Mayor Council was we had the the great pleasure of joining the WRA here. We've got pipe that was delivered just this week, which is the next, you know, good step towards towards this here. But what we have in front of us right now is adopting the WRA ordinance. And there's a lot of things that come along with this. The gist of it is that the the fats, oil and grease part of the the ordinance will be administered by the WRA. One of the good things that we've kind of set ourselves up for this in previous years, I believe in February two thousand seventeen, city changed the ordinance to to put in place a fats, oil and grease program. So and over the past three years, at least, we have been making sure that 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 ordinance has been being met in our development standards. That set us up good. However, there may be some some challenges for business for restaurant entities that in our in our city, we will be working towards a program to help with offsetting the cost of of any grease interceptors that will have to be put into place due to this ordinance, just to kind of help offset those costs. They may be significant for any but that will happen at remodels for business, for any any structure that was not previously a restaurant or a food food service industry. If that building's changed into a restaurant, they would be required to put in a grease interceptor building or a change over fifty thousand dollars in the in that building, they would be required to put in a grease interceptor. Also, if the restaurant, if the building is out of a restaurant, not a restaurant for a year, we would have to change, we'd have to put in the grease interceptor as well. But we will be working towards putting a grant program together to to ease that. Staff does recommend the approval of of this ordinance change.
Thank you for that background. With that, I'm gonna open the public hearing tonight. And is there anyone that wishes to address council of public here? Hearing no one, have we received any written communication on this item?
No, sir.
All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing and allow council for discussion or action on this item.
First reading of ordinance seven six five.
Second. Discussion. Hearing our roll call.
Gish.
Hi.
Johansson.
Hi.
De Phillips. Burger. Porker Dean.
Hi.
All right, that item passes and that's gonna bring us to item N tonight. This is resolution zero five dash four three two two. This is approving the Grimes Plex Monetary Gift Agreement.
I'll just tee this up quick. This is a part two of the donation for the Grimes Plague. So we've had a number of conversations surrounding this topic as of laid. At the last meeting, the council accepted the real estate for the Grimes Plex. This is an agreement that outlines that Mr. Kargarsa Day will provide twelve million dollars in cash to fund a portion of the project, which is guaranteed by a surety bond. And this will allow us to put the project up for bid and award a bid and construct the project. So staff would recommend approval and we would thank Raza for his generous contribution to the city of Grimes.
Thank you. With that, we're gonna, we're gonna have you come up here and we're gonna present you with the check. We also have a reception after this. This will be our last item tonight to recognize your generous gift. So please come up.
On behalf of the City of Grimes, it's my pleasure to accept this generous gift from Mr. Kargarsa Day. And this is, he's gifting the city twelve million dollars in cash, but he's also gifted fifty acres and sixteen million dollars worth of land. So this is a twenty eight million dollar joint gift. And personally, what I appreciate as much as either of those two things for the city is he has put an enormous amount of time. Mr. Kargarsa Day runs a series of plastics companies around the country and real estate development, a number of other things. But he's spent a lot of time on this project and his team has Tim Day, Arish, Kargarsa Day. You know, praising yourself and we appreciate this as a city. This is a great gift. This is the largest gift in the city of Grimes that I'm aware of. So thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask Tim Day and Arish also join us, join me here.
So.
I figured you'd make.
Keep us going to.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I I would, I would be remiss to if I didn't recognize the amount of time that city staff has spent on this. J K Anderson, Alex Fallsgraph, Brian Becker, all of the Park and Rec Committee, they've spent a lot of time on this. Ross Jungy, who chairs the Park and Rec Committee is here tonight. Council members, all of the council members here and also former council member Joe Altringer. So thank you, city. For all that you've done and thank you, Mr. Carter, as a day. We appreciate it.
I don't know that there's any more platitudes that we could make. We'd probably be here all night, but with that, I would move resolution zero five dash four three two two.
Second. Discussion. Hearing our roll call.
Johansson.
Hi.
Gish.
Hi.
De Phillips.
Hi.
Burger.
Hi.
Porker Dean.
Hi.
All right, that item passed.
Move your adjourn.
Second.
All favor.
Hi.